Between group, between work and other things, so.
Thank you. Any further questions of our presenter? So what would you like to do? Counselor Christie.
I'll make the motion to approve the attached communication plan for the proposed land use bylaw 1808 as presented.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor? Carried. So are we going to have an open house? Counselor Keever.
I move we schedule an open house for April 2nd, 2020, from 3:00 to 6:30.
I think the presenter was suggesting 3:30. Are you okay with 3:30 instead of 3:00?
I said 3:00.
You said 3:00 and the administration was asking for 3:30. Does that suit you? Great. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Perfect.
Carried.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay. All the way down to 8.1 already. Tickety-boo.
It's a Thursday.
Cao Hogan, can you please take us through this one?
This, members of council, the item before you is a request from Three Hills Victim Services. So the request we received is the is funding application for a $500 grant to assist in the cost of hosting the annual community conversations around elder abuse session. So administration is recommending that this request would be a fit under the Recreation, Community Arts and Cultural Events Grant. So there's just a little bit of a note is it wasn't applied for under that grant, but we feel that this is where it would fit. It has been funded in the in the past, and so we're recommending the council donate $500 under the Rec. Community Arts and Cultural Events Grant to the Three Hills Victim Services to assist with costs associated with hosting the annual community conversations around elder abuse session.
Thank you. Any questions for Mike? Counselor Christie.
Question for you. On the other grant applications, we've asked for a financial report. Was there any financial information from them with this?
No, we didn't. We didn't receive any.
I'd really like to see that, and it's important that we do, especially on this one.
Thank you.
If if council wishes, then given that, given that, then I think the recommendation would then be to to table this item until we receive the financial information for victim services. If I've understood you correctly, Counselor Christie?
Yes, and I'll make that motion that we table this until we get a financial statement.
Any other questions regarding this before we move on with the motion? All those in favor?
Tabling?
To table? Unanimous. Thank you. Yeah. Great, thank you.
In some circumstances.
We'll move on to 8.2. Is Lori our presenter today? Going to settle in good?
Sure. I said I would help out with this one.
Well, thank you. Go ahead when you're ready.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning, council. The next five agenda items deal with our intermunicipal collaborative collaborative framework, agreements with our rural partners or neighbors. So the first one I'm kind of going to go through in a little bit of detail, but I think from forward for the next four, I'll just kind of highlight what the changes are. They look very similar in nature. A lot of the same details are covered. Some of the agreements almost look like the same format, so just kind of depended on which municipality prepared the draft, so. The first one we're going to talk about today is the agreement with Mountain View County. So as a result of the recent updates to the Municipal Government Act, the province now requires all municipalities that share a common boundary to adopt an ICF by April 1st, 2020. Further amendments through Bill 25, which was the red tape reduction bill, provided clarification on the ICF processes follows. Previously, there were specific areas that we had to discuss. So now the framework must describe the services to be provided under it that benefit residents in more than one of the municipalities. Secondly, the municipalities must identify which municipality is responsible for providing which services and outline how these services will be delivered and funded. And lastly, every framework must contain provisions establishing a process for resolving disputes that occurs while the framework is in effect. So the, in addition to the ICF, when the legislation first came out, IDP was also part of the process. And in order for an ICF to be valid, the municipalities also had to adopt an IDP. The IDP is now a voluntary or it's not a necessary process to this. And if both municipalities agree that there isn't any necessity to have one at this time, then one does not have to be done. So with respect to Mountain View, both Neheel County Council, or Neheel County Council has approved a motion that the completion of an IDP with Mountain View is not necessary at this time. Mountain View plans to bring a motion forward at their February 26 meeting, also recommending that. So the IDP will be set to the side for now. With respect to Mountain View, they are proposing also to bring this agreement, the ICF agreement, forward at their council on February 26. So our recommended motion is that council approve the ICF collaboration framework agreement with Mountain View County as presented.
Thank you, Lori. Any discussion? Counselor King?
There goes. I would make the motion that council approve the intermunicipal collaboration framework agreement with Mountain View County as is presented.
Thank you, Counselor King. Any further discussion? All those in favor of approving the? Great. Carried unanimously. 8.3. When you're ready.
Okay, thank you. The next one is the ICF with Starland County. So same preamble as the previous with Mountain View County. Just an update on where we are with the IDP there. Both councils have approved motions that the completion of an IDP is not necessary at this time. So we've both done those most, completed those motions. Starland is proposing to bring the proposed ICF agreement as presented as well to their next council meeting. So our recommended motion on this one is that council approve the ICF agreement with Starland County as presented.
Thank you. Any questions? Anyone like to make a motion? Counselor Christie.
I'll make the motion that we approve the intermunicipal collaboration framework agreement with Starland County as presented.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Carried unanimously. 8.4.
ICF framework with the county of Stettler. Same thing here. Both councils have approved motions that the completion of an IDP is not necessary at this time. The county of Stettler has already approved the proposed agreement at their January 14th, 2020 council meeting. So recommended motion is that council approve the ICF agreement with the county of Stettler as presented.
Thank you. Any questions for the presenter? Do we have a motion? Counselor Keever.
I approve the agreement as presented for the ICF agreement.
Thank you, Counselor Keever. So that was a motion to approve the agreement as presented. All those in favor? Carried unanimous. 8.5.
Thank you, council. ICF framework with Rocky View County. So just a little bit different of a twist here with the IDP with Rocky View County. We have had been mostly through the process of an ID, with an IDP with them when the legislation changed. So we decided it was important to continue that process. First reading of the IDP was held October 22nd, 2019, and a public hearing was held on November 26th, 2019. Second reading was also approved at our council meeting on November 26th, 2019. As Rocky View County is part of the Calgary Metropolitan Regional Board, approval is required from this regional board prior to proceeding with third reading. So just in case there was any amendments or proposed requested amendments that came back from Calgary Regional Board, we decided to hold off third reading. That information is expected back from that board sometime this week. So we're hoping that we can bring this back to our next council meeting. Rocky View County is proposing to bring the proposed agreement forward to their council meeting for approval today as well. So their council meeting meets today. So our recommended motion is that council approve the ICF collaboration framework agreement with Rocky View County as presented.
Thank you. Any questions for our presenter? Okay. Does anyone have an emotion they'd like to bring forward? Counselor King.
Mine works, so I can make it if you like.
Go ahead, Counselor Penner. Oh, it's on. It's on. Okay. I'd make the motion that council approve the intermunicipal collaboration framework agreement with Rocky View County as has been presented.
Thank you for putting so much work into that. Any further discussion to the motion? Great. All those in favor? Carried unanimous. 8.6.
Okay, here we go. Last one. ICF framework with Wheatland County. So with respect to the IDP, first reading of the IDP was held November 26th, 2019, and a public hearing was held January 14th, 2020. No further readings have taken place. Wheatland County recessed their public hearing. So we wanted to ensure that there wasn't any further information or requests for amendments that came forward prior to, before we continue that process. So we're working through some last minute amendments here, and that process is expected to continue into March. So you will see that document again in March. But just a reminder that it doesn't have to be completed as part of the ICF process. We felt it was important in this situation to have an IDP with Wheatland County. So Wheatland County is also proposing to bring the proposed ICF agreement forward to their March 3rd council. Our recommended motion today is that council approve the ICF agreement with Wheatland County as presented.
Thank you. Any questions for our presenter? Anyone like to make a motion? Counselor Penner.
I'll make the motion that council approve the ICF agreement with Wheatland County as presented.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Carried unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you. Cao Hogan. Looks like you're up next for 8.7, intermunicipal collaboration framework agreement with the town of Troschu.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Also, before we get going, I'd like to thank Lori for the work she's done on the rural to rural ICFs. Just, I think council's aware, but just for clarity, all of our rural ICFs are now done. So those are, those are absolutely completed now. We still have a number of urbans to do, but the item before us is the first step in that pathway. So the item before us, the intermunicipal collaboration framework agreement with town of Troschu. So again, this is part of the mandate, the mandated regulations by the province that all municipalities that share a common border need to to talk, look at ways they can work together, look at ways they can cost share services, have a way for bringing up new discussions on potential new services for the benefit of the region, as well as a dispute mechanism that allows the the parties to work through any squabbles that they that they may have. The ICF that's before you is the result of a lengthy process that we had with the town of Troschu. Throughout that process, of course, we were discussing our needs and desires, and what we were looking for is a service to the area. Town of Troschu was looking at the same from their perspective as well. And throughout that process, we were able to find a lot of common ground and I think have a lot of good, healthy discussion between the two parties. Resulting from that discussion are a number of agreements and are the new agreements and updated agreements, depending on the type. There, we're asking for council's consideration of approval of all of those agreements, and then approval of the ICF document itself. And should council be willing to to give that approval as presented, once the same documents are approved by the the town, the ICF process with the town of Troschu would be would be completed. The one difference in Troschu from many of the others that you've seen, the regulations allow a, an ICF to be adopted by either resolution or by bylaw. The town of Troschu has requested that this be done by bylaw, so there is an added process here in terms of rather than a simple resolution, there is a bylaw attached to this ICF for for its approval that way. Should council grant that approval, then we'll inform the town of Troschu and take the process from from there, which is, of course, assuming that the town has approved it as well. We're waiting to hear back on that. Then we would have to inform the province that we've completed this process with with them. So with that, if if council would like, I can go through all the agreements. We have a resolution for each agreement. I can go through them all, and then you can do the motions, or I can go through each agreement and you do the motion, whichever way is, whichever way council desires.
Does anyone have a preference of how we work through this? I agree. Let's do each agreement and.
So the first agreement on the list, the recommended motion that council authorized or even CAO to execute the Troschu Transportation Agreement as presented. This is a standard agreement that we have with, or we are, we already have with some urbans. We're proposing with with almost all of them around if there is work that they want done that our county forces can provide. It sets up the relationship for how that work would occur and the costs that would be associated with that work. And so it, again, that's the the transportation agreement document.
So we've been looking at this document for quite some time and done a lot of work on it. Is there any questions or concerns that we see before we consider the motion for this document? All right. Counsel, I'm ready for a motion. If you are. Counselor Christie.
I'll make a motion to authorize or even the CAO to execute the town of Troschu Transportation Agreement as presented.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Carried unanimously. Number two. Mr. Hogan.
Through you, Madam Chair. The fire services agreement is one of a couple of fire agreements, part of this this overall bundle. This is the one that outlines the relationship between the the county and the town as a service provider for fire within within the rural area around the town of Troschu. So this agreement sets up that relationship. It sets up the responsibilities of each party, what the county is responsible for, what the town is responsible for. It sets out the base funding amount is in terms of what the county will provide financially to to the town. Throughout the discussions in this agreement, I think this is one of the, one of the healthy areas where where positive discussion was had. In the past, fire has been heavily subsidized to to all, to most of our urbans and by the county in terms of looking at the the cost sharing. I think there was some mutually beneficial recognition here of those costs being being shared. So as an example, the county had been covering dispatch costs for all of the urbans within the county. Under this agreement is one example, the town of Troschu will assume those costs for its own population. So that'll no longer be a subsidy from from the county. The two municipalities have agreed to jointly purchase different pieces of fire apparatus. In the past, those would either be completely fundraised or they would be just provided by the county. So again, there's a cost sharing recognition from each municipality that it's to our our benefit to share on some of those pieces of equipment rather than for each of us to to buy our own. So ultimately, that'll, that'll be a tax savings for the for the residents if we're not out buying two pieces of equipment when when one piece of equipment will work. So that that has come forward and the, I was going to talk about the fire hall lease, but that's the next agreement, so that's a different thing. But throughout this, it does outline the the relationships between the two parties. Again, if there's a dispute, how that dispute is resolved and going through there, and it sets up that relationship for for the next handful of years.
Thank you. Any questions for our presenter? Anyone interested in making a motion? Counselor King?
There we go. I'd make the motion that council authorize the REVE and the CAO to execute the Troschu Fire Services Agreement as presented.
Thank you. Any discussion? Other than I want to say I appreciated being part of this process, I think both parties were much better informed on both sides of the story, and I think this is something to celebrate of of a success for our two municipalities working well together. Having said that, I'll ask for the motion. All those in favor to execute the fire service agreement as presented? Thanks. Unanimous. Number three, the fire hall lease agreement.
This is a, this is another agreement in the bundle that we've negotiated with the town of Troschu. This is a bit different than what we see in a number of the other, our other urban partners in that generally elsewhere, our urban partners own the the fire station or the fire hall that the the equipment and the members utilize. In Troschu, the building is owned by the county. So in the other areas, we actually provide support for the fire halls through the base funding amounts that we give. In this, in Troschu, given that the building is ours, a number of those costs were being borne by us, even though the department that's within the station isn't, isn't technically ours. They're they're a partner of ours. But they're they're managed and and part of the town. So through this agreement, it outlines the relationship between the town and the county by which the town will rent or lease the the fire hall on a monthly basis. And who's, again, like a standard lease agreement, who's responsible for what items as they as they occur. But this sets up the the lease agreement between the town and the county by which the town leases the the fire hall from the county.
Thank you, Mr. Hogan. I I like the the clarification that this lease is is unique to to this department, this town. Any other comments or questions for the presenter? I would like to entertain a motion if anyone has one. Counselor Christie.
I'll make the motion to authorize the REVE and CAO to execute the Troschu Fire Hall Lease Agreement as presented.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor? Carried unanimous. Number four.
Again, through you, Madam Chair. The the Recreation Agreement or the Memorandum of Agreement to Assist in Recreational Operations with the Town of Troschu is being recommended for council's approval. It, this is a fairly, fairly straightforward agreement outlining the county's commitment to recreation within the town of Troschu. So there, again, there is a bit of a unique element with with the town of Troschu in this regard. So in in our other urban partners, the county provides base funding for for recreation. That is true in Troschu as well. The one difference we're seeing to that element is that in the past, that's been $45,000. We've, we've agreed with the town of Troschu that that would be raised to $50,000 as per, as part of this agreement. The unique item here is that Troschu also receives additional rec. funding, and that is through an area special tax bylaw that doesn't exist in other areas of the county. So this is a bylaw that was put in many, many years ago at the request of the local population. So this was resident-led from the area, and they asked that they be, they be taxed a bit extra to help support the pool operations within the town of Troschu. So that appears in that community area. It does not appear elsewhere within within the county. This agreement confirms our commitment to to that bylaw that was put forward by by residents many, many years ago.
Thank you. Any further questions? I'm ready for a motion when you are. Counselor King.
There we go. Okay, I would make the motion that council authorize the REVE and the CAO to execute the Troschu Recreation Agreement as been presented.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Carried unanimous. Number five.
This agreement governs the the use of the Troschu Transfer Site. So again, it's a fairly straightforward, standard agreement. It outlines that the the county and its residents will have use of the site that's owned, operated, and maintained by the town of Troschu. There's, of course, a yearly or annual fee attached to that. This fee that's been looked at is the same, sorry, it's almost the same as in past years. There's been a slight increase to it of, I believe, about $841 from past years, just recognizing inflationary pressures that that occur. And that's, those inflationary pressures are accounted for with the with the 2% escalation clause each each year. But other than that, again, it's a, we believe it to be a straightforward agreement that just allows our residents access to the town of Troschu Transfer Station and helps to assist the town with the operation and maintenance of that of that facility.
Thank you. Any further questions? Motion? Counselor Keever.
I authorize the REVE and CAO to execute the Troschu Transfer Site Agreement as presented.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Carried unanimous. Number six, our first reading of bylaw 1818. Is that right?
So as as mentioned before, is one of the the unique items with the negotiations with the town is they did request the ICF process to be adopted by bylaw. We haven't heard differently since that that request was made. So right before you is bylaw 1818, which is to adopt the ICF document that was attached as part of your package. So the ICF document itself is the, is what you'd consider the ICF proper. So all the agreements that we just went through are separate standalone agreements, but they are reflected in the in the ICF document, which has an agreement listing and says how a number of the the relationships between the town and county are governed. The agreement also outlines the the roles of administration and council. It outlines a dispute resolution mechanism. It outlines the process by which new services are proposed by any of the parties. So if there, if one group wants to bring a potential new service forward that they're going to be looking for cost sharing on, there's a process outlined as to how that occurs. The agreement also outlines, for lack of a better term, or to shorten it, call it a code of conduct regarding communications and social media use, those sorts of provisions. And with that, this is the document that that checks the box for the province. So again, it is through regulation. We will have to revisit this regularly. So generally, once per per term, each council will have to go through the the process of making sure that the ICF is still, is still working for both parties. So the ICF document itself establishes a committee that that's tasked with doing that. So the, again, where this has been the the result of a negotiation with the town, and we're recommending that, you'll see in the motions, that we're recommending that council give all three readings today, which, of course, will require consent for third reading as well.
Thank you, Mr. Hogan. A very cherished document that took a lot of effort on many people's parts. I'd like to thank everyone who made this work, and it's exciting to be at this stage. Any other questions for our presenter? Counselor Christie.
I guess my question would be, by accepting this by bylaw or a? I guess my question would be, by accepting this by bylaw or a motion, is it more or less binding? Or why the request? I'm curious.
I think that was just a preference. The reality is, you can, if it's done by resolution, it can be changed by resolution. If it's adopted by bylaw, the reality is, I believe the document outlines that changes to the document itself can be made if both parties agree. So that power is already given within the document. If we want to repeal it, you do need another bylaw to repeal it. But if you're going to repeal the ICF, you need something to replace it with anyway. So from our perspective, there's no real difference to that. It's really just a preference.
Thank you. Any other questions? I will entertain a motion. Counselor Christie?
I'll make a motion to give first reading to Bylaw 1818 to adopt Neill County-Troschu Intermunicipal Collaboration Framework.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Therefore, all those in favor? Carried unanimous. So we're looking at second reading. Anyone have a, go ahead, Counselor Penner.
I would move that counsel give second reading of Bylaw 1818 to adopt the Neill-Troschu ICF.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Nope. All those in favor? Carried unanimous. Number eight, we need a consent for third reading. Anyone so interested? Counselor Keever's looking at doing that.
I move we give third reading to Bylaw 1818.
Counselor Keever, was that consent for the, for third reading that you made a motion for? Nodding yes. All those in favor of giving consent for third reading? Carried unanimous. Thank you. And Counselor King?
There it goes. So I would make the motion that counsel give third reading to Bylaw 1818 to adopt the Neill-Troschu Intermunicipal Collaboration Framework.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call. All those in favor? Carried unanimous. We have a huge document absolutely completed. Well done, everybody. Exactly. We are really appreciative of the work Troschu has done as well to make this happen. Okay, does anyone feel we need to have a bit of a break before we trudge through? Because we're just moving along really quick, or we could just keep moving? We're good. Okay, let's go to 8.8. Discovery Fair, please. When you're ready, Catherine.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Counsel. I have for you today an RFD for 2020's Discovery Fair. In 2019, counsel hosted two Discovery Fair rate pair meetings, one in Troschu and one in Acme. The Discovery Fair setup consisted of dedicated booths manned by staff for each of Neill County's departments. Each booth contained displays of information, visual aids, demonstrations, or interactive elements. The Discovery Fair rate pair meetings were family-friendly come-and-go events held in the evening. They featured a free barbecue meal prepared by a local community group, included fun activities for children, and door prizes for residents to win. Facilitating the rate pair meeting in this way allowed for Neill County Council and staff to meet with residents, answer their questions, provide information, and have discussions in a relaxed, friendly, enjoyable atmosphere. This year, communications has changed the name of the event to Discovery Fair and Rate Pair Meeting to help clarify a bit of the confusion that the Discovery Fair is Neill County's annual rate pair meeting and the report to the community. So hosting the Discovery Fair rate pair meeting in the summer would give staff ample time to prepare for the event and avoid interfering with the harvest season. Some dates to keep in mind is Friday and Saturday, August 14th and 15th is the country market and long table dinner at Horseshoe Canyon. Troschu Community Hall, Acme Community Hall, the Torrington Arena, and Three Hills Community Center would be appropriately sized facilities to host. One Discovery Fair rate pair meeting is included in the budget for 2020. If counsel approves two Discovery Fairs, this will require a budget amendment. The cost per the event is $7,000, and there's a breakdown there. So counsel options is counsel approves one Discovery Fair, counsel approves two Discovery Fairs, counsel directs administration to bring back other options for open houses. And I've also attached a communications plan to the RFD, which is essentially the same as last year. A few changes, as I mentioned, we changed the name to Discovery Fair and Rate Pair Meeting. We will try a few new tactics this year to really try and target Neill County residents specifically. And as well, we'll include a report following the meeting for counsel, just the feedback that staff heard from the event.
I like the changes. Thank you, and I owe you an apology. Your name is Christine.
No problem.
Well done. Any questions for our presenter? No? Counselor Penner?
I think you did an awesome job last year in who you targeted in that. I'm not sure how we can improve that, but just my feeling. And I was wondering, you didn't mention the Carbon Hall. Do you feel it's not big enough?
I don't know exactly how many that hall holds, but especially this year, I'd like to get, I think in Troschu, we had just about 100, maybe over 100. So if the Carbon Hall would hold that many, then it could be an option. But if we're really trying to get lots of residents there, I just don't know the size-wise.
I guess my question is more if we hold one or two, that would be my question. If we were holding two, I would like to see them in the other corners of the county, Torrington and Carbon, being the second time we've done this, just to get a feel for the different locations.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Counselor King?
There we go. I guess I was going to suggest something similar to Counselor Penner, that I'd really like to see us do two if we can. And in my mind, we would flip corners, much like what Debbie said, and so I would encourage us to consider Carbon. And whether Torrington would be the other obvious location to go kind of opposites of what we did last year. And just, I guess my last comment would be is we just really need somehow to help our residents understand that this is their rate pair meeting. And I appreciate the inclusion of rate pair in the advertising, but I think it's also partly onus on us as counsel to get out there and let.
Sorry. So you wanted to say onus on counsel is to get out there and make some information out there about what point is it? Thank you. Sorry about your mic problems.
Through the REVE?
Yes.
Through the deputy, sir. Just another question. I don't like the word "meeting" in the way that we're doing it, just for counsel here to discuss. Can we come up with something else like a discussion, a rate pair discussion, or a rate pair gathering forum or something? It's not, although forum to me sounds like you're up in front of them rather than mingling. Just for a discussion point here between ourselves, what's everybody's feeling?
I see your point. It looks like it should have a specific agenda if it's got the word "meeting." Yeah.
For, on that note, would counsel be amenable to just replacing "meeting" with the word "evening"?
Evening. Good. Okay. Gathering. So we're good with evening? Or Counselor Keever, would you prefer gathering? Just a thought. We're good with evening. Anything else to discuss or ask? Counselor Penner?
I guess we just need to discuss when we should host them.
Yep. Any ideas? Preferences? Counselor Penner?
Just thinking, but if you could tell me when harvest was going to be, I would make an easy decision, but.
This year or last year?
Yeah. I don't mind early August. August sometime, because we do have the long table in the middle of the month, but just my feeling, what's everybody else's feeling?
Anyone else have ideas, thoughts about the date? Wow. Counselor Christie?
Can we work it where we have one the week before and one the week after the long table dinner?
Counselor Christie, yeah, that would be possible. Really, once we have the first meeting set up, it's just replicating it again. So, you know, aside from food, we'd have to refresh, but otherwise, we'd be ready to go.
Okay. Sorry.
If counsel's good with that timeframe, one of the things we can do is rather than nail down a specific date, because of course we're going to be subject to hall availability and stuff like that, if counsel's good with the August timeframe, we can say, we can hold the event in August as part of the motion. And then that way, that gives us some freedom to, if the hall's busy on, say, that Wednesday, we can do it on the Thursday or whatever, right? The, so it's just a matter of if counsel's good with that timeframe to put that in. And then again, if you want one or two, and where those are going to be, if they're going to be Torrington and Carbon or wherever.
Thank you. Counselor Penner?
I would like to make a motion, and we can discuss it further if need be, that counsel approved to host the Neill County Discovery Fair rate pair meetings in Torrington and Carbon with availability, of course, if it can be, within the month of August.
Any further discussion? Counselor Keever?
I like the idea of Carbon, but I don't see the necessity of one in Torrington. I think one, Carbon has always had good attendances at these things. And to spread it around and have the additional cost of a second one, I don't see the point in it.
Through the deputy, I hear your point, Glenn. Being this is the second time we've tried this format, I would like to see two locations, and then we can revisit it before next year's. This is just my thinking.
Now that people understand it, will we have a need for two is what you're worrying about? Counselor King?
If you're patient, it eventually comes to you, yes. Again, I think I would be in agreement that by providing the two locations, we give sort of the maximum opportunity to our rate pairs to attend. A specific one date might not work, considering timing for families and the different individuals and what they're doing. So I think I'd be supportive of, you know, potentially doing the two again, not potentially actually doing the two. Gives us maximum opportunity for exposure. If we communicate, we keep saying that we want to be available to our rate pairs. This gives us a chance to be available. So I recognize there's costs associated, but perhaps by.
We forgot to tell you, you were on a time limit, that we gave just your mic a timer, and it goes out.
And rightly so.
Sorry about that, Counselor King, but I think we got the gist of what you had to say. So any other discussion on this motion? All those in favor? Opposed? Carried. Thank you. We had a lot more on our plate. I would call a break for your mics, but I think we just have two more items before we go into closed session. So is everyone okay with moving forward through those? Okay, great. So we're down to counsel and committee reports. We had that changed on our agenda earlier today, and we asked Counselor Penner to do a solid waste report, please.
So we met last week on February 21st. Just to get yous up to speed, with SAUA, the Southern Alberta Energy from Waste, a site has been approved, Neill County, on the intersection there of number one and 36, at the transfers, their site that's already there. So that's, it's not for sure that they'll do it. They've got, it'll be 18 to 24 months before it's up and running. If they say yes, they can meet all the different stipulations. Transstore replacement is underway. We've ordered six, and one of them will be removed from Carbon and refurbished and put at a different location. The replacement loan summaries should have been sent to all the CAOs. So going forward here, we will be issuing a check for that or bringing it up for a discussion. And also, there's an agreement the lawyers have just made up that will be given to the CAOs to go through and to see if we approve of it, if it covers us all in case somebody is unable to make their payment, is the big question here right now. So we have to go through that before, through that agreement to make sure it's what everybody wants going forward. Commercial tipping fees starting March 1st are at $62.50. The new recycling bins are in place. You'll see them around the cardboard and the newsprint. So far, it's working. They're still working out the different routes to get them picked up within the counties. And we're also offering them to more businesses that are within two kilometers of the route that they're already making, if they want to get a bin or not. We are now charging for the bins because we have to pay for them. So the first bin is $20, and the second and after that is $10 each. And that's about it.
Thank you, Counselor. Any questions for Counselor Penner? Nope. Next up is 10.2. That'd be myself, would like to talk a bit. I attended the Reynolds, Mirth, Richard, and Farmers Municipal Law Seminar last week. It was a very well-done and very informative seminar. I mostly, the agenda covered recovery of taxes related to land, the municipal authority reserve and land, FOIP, and enforcement for our community peace officers. Each of those was lots of heavy legal pieces to it. And the main reason why I wanted to bring this report forward is because the whole time sitting through this, I had a great appreciation for our staff. The details are, and the correctness of the details is extremely important in keeping us a viable county. And as far as I could tell from what we discussed, we have one of the top staffs that making sure those details are well-met. And it is a pile of work. So if I ever have a resident ask me, do we really need to have all this stuff? I'm going to say without a doubt, we need all this stuff. That was just so strongly felt through each one of those presentations. That's all I really had to report on those. Do you have anything you think would be worth adding? CEO Hogan?
I think the, you know, we find them a benefit too, even as staff when we attend those. It's an opportunity for us to, you know, we leave those with a couple of, we always leave those with some new information as well. So there are a couple of things that we took away from that that we'll start to put into practice here at the county. But through those is, in attendance at events like that, is part of how we maintain those details you're talking about. It is a good opportunity to converse with the lawyers, as well as to ask casual legal questions that otherwise we would get billed for. But at the venue, we're able to pose some of those questions. So there is a bit of cost, it does cost us to attend, but we usually do get some free legal advice out of that too, so it does offset that.
Fantastic. Yes, I appreciate the networking. You're right.
And it is, it is a fortunate thing that when it comes to, when it comes to the law and the courts, you. you generally don't want to be a trendsetter. So if you can learn from the mistakes that others have made before you make them yourself, that saves a pile of energy resources and money for municipalities as well.
Any questions in regards to this report? Great. We have a motion to receive reports. CEO Hogan?
With council's indulgence, maybe just one follow-up item as well in regard to Counselor Penner's report. We have received the, we have received the list from Jumheller Solid Waste around the transfer bin replacement. We did note that the overall cost of the replacements has increased from the number that you saw before. So our portion is not significantly up, but it is a bit higher than what was, what the number you've seen before. So I think we're into, into the 150s now as opposed to the 145 era. But we have, we have communicated back that the county would like to take the one-time, the one-time lump fee approach, as was discussed by council.
Fantastic. Thank you for that update. Ready for a motion? Counselor Christie?
Those guys are afraid to push the button over there. I'll make the motion to accept the council committee reports.
Thank you. All those in favor? Carried. Last on our list during open session is council follow-up action list. We'll take a quick peek at that and afterwards, we'll have a short break before we go into closed session. So that was, our follow-up was, of course, pre-circulated. Did anyone see any concerns, thoughts? Counselor King?
Promise to be quick. Motion to receive the council follow-up action list for information.
Thank you. Any further comments? All those in favor? Carried. Move us into break. Just for everyone to know that we will be going into closed session afterwards. If that affects who would like to return. We'll break for 10 minutes.
I'd like to call our meeting back to order. We are in open session for the February twenty fifth meeting. We have whizzed through our agenda today, even though it took a pile of work to get to that. The finishing touches were quick to take care of, so that was kind of fun to be so quick. So we are looking for a motion for a closed session. Councilor King has made the motion. All those in favor, carried.
We were all ready, right? Carry.
Yeah.
Sorry for both of you.
Great. And are we online yet?
Yes, we are.
Okay. Fantastic. So we're back to our meeting. We had a very close session and we have a couple things to discuss coming out of that. We are looking at the conversation around Badlands Motorsports Resort Agreement. Anyone willing to add their say about this in the motion?
Counselor King?
There you go. So in light of the discussion around the development agreement for Badlands Motorsports, I would make the motion that council move to proceed with the development agreement as discussed.
Any objections to the motion? All those in favor? Carry unanimous. Next item is the seniors, Chosu Seniors Housing. The NRC just skipped over it for a minute.
Yeah, so the basis of council recall this item from previous council meetings as well. We are tasked to look at information. We're still in the process of gathering some of that information. Although looking at some material such as the past audited financial statements from other jurisdictions where these are in place, having the economic climate, putting pressures on our own municipality around our future financial plans and what that means or our ability to access funding to make sure that we're looking after our own infrastructure. At this point in time, what administration is recommending is that we encourage the town of Chosu to pursue options through municipal affairs. We have confirmed with municipal affairs that it is possible for a municipality to exceed its debt limit with ministerial approval. That process can be initiated by the municipality looking to do so and can go through the appropriate channels at the municipal affairs level. And so what we're recommending in order to allow the, well, we're still looking at gathering information in order to allow the Chosu Housing Corporation to move forward, would be to recommend to council to encourage that group to explore the option of having the town of Chosu's debt limit increased through municipal affairs in order to back the project. With that being said, the county will still look to better ascertain some of the final numbers and what impact this might have on the county's own future financial plans.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Counselor Hugo.
Mike, do we have any finalized planning on what the Chosu seniors council or building is going to look like? Is it going to be 80 beds, 105? Do we have any information on that or are we still expecting it?
We're still expecting that finalized information. So we do know roughly what that's going to be. Although as per our last meeting with the last information we received with the group, when they outlined that there would be some potential changes to that, say in the number of beds, and I think that was a result of another partner coming on. We've not seen that final version yet.
Any other discussion? Would anyone be comfortable making a motion on this matter? Counselor Christie.
I'll make the motion. There we go. Make a motion to encourage the town of Chosu to make application to the Minister of Municipal Affairs for the authority to exceed the town's debt limit for the purpose of constructing a senior housing accommodation.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Carry unanimous. No, sorry. Those opposed? One. Carry. Great. We got lots of work done this year so far. It's been a busy year for everybody and we've done great work. I should have also mentioned at the beginning of our meeting that our Reeve, Jerry Whitstock, was trying to be on board with us. And due to technical difficulties on our end, we weren't able to have Jerry join us just so that people know that he definitely is participating at his best ability from that spot. If there is no other items for anyone, we would like to call the meeting adjourned. Adjourned.